Okay, I've got seven o'clock and call the meeting to order. Can everyone hear all right?
Yep.
Very good. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll, please.
Mr. Lowry? Mr. Lowry?
Here, present.
Are you in Shelby Township?
Correct.
Thank you.
You said Lowry, right?
I'm sorry?
Lowry.
Oh, Lowry, sorry.
No problem.
Mr. Snyder?
Here, Shelby Township.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here, Shelby Township.
Mr. Appone?
Here, Shelby Township.
Mr. Turner?
Here, Shelby Township.
Mr. Groth?
Here in Shelby Township.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum. I'm also in Shelby Township.
Okay, thank you. And I am participating from Shelby Township as well. First item is approve of the agenda.
This is Gene Meredith. I'm participating from Shelby, too.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
My apologies, Mr. Meredith.
No problem.
Okay, do we miss anybody else? Mr. Secretary?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you. Congratulations on your daughter's great accomplishments as a graduating senior this year.
Oh, thank you.
So next item is approve of the agenda. If there are no additions or corrections, some tractions.
Some move?
Or moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is approve of the minutes from the May 24, 2021 meeting.
Go move.
Or it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So this evening, we've got three site plans to consider. The first site plan number 19-11, William Lang, KJ's Irish Pub. Probably the most frequent visitor of this board for over the last couple of years, but that's a good thing because he's doing good things with his restaurant on Auburn Road there. Is the petitioner or representative here?
Yes, I'm present. And now on you.
Okay, great. That's it's and always and I believe that Mr. Groth, correct me if I'm wrong. July 17 will is the sort of the is the deadline for the the community to go live again. So we'll be back in person for all meetings subsequent to that.
We we kicking it off with our board meeting on the 20th.
So if you want to heckle live, that would be the meeting you need to come to.
That's correct. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, good. Yeah, we're going back to going back to normal and gonna have fun again.
That'd be, yeah, we're I think we're all looking forward to a little bit, a little bit more normalcy. Well, as much as normalcy plays here in Shelby Township, so. All right, so the the petitioner, if I can get your name and address, please.
William Lang, 5491 Auburn Road, Shelby.
Okay, Mr. Lang, what 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 are we proposing this time?
Well, Julie has identified the fact that when I originally came to you, like it was actually before COVID, that the fascia was different than than how we have, you know, finally come to because it was it was the original architect, which I switched to Ron Ron and Roman out of Birmingham that also does the architectural and the the design for everything. So it was her view that, you know, you originally approved that original fascia and that now that it has changed that I would have to come before the board.
It's more than more than just more than just more than just the the facades. I mean, the whole the outline is dramatically different. I'm not saying it's bad, but it's different. So if you can kind of like just present, okay, what? What had we what had we agreed to and what what are we looking at now? And do you have the documents you can share?
It was gonna be a flat. I believe you have all the drawings with the changes that's that gone on.
Yeah.
She forward that to you?
Yeah, we do. I just if if you had them that you could access them, it is a public is a public meeting.
Oh, no, I don't have that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's 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 fine. No, that's fine. That's fine. But why don't you go ahead and explain at least what so what are the what are the main change? What are the changes?
So originally, when we came to the board, it was a flat roof in the front and on the side. Now it's dramatically changed where, you know, it it's gonna go back up into the air with these large windows. You know, there's gonna be a cinder block that's gonna be have, you know, it's have a different finish on them. There's two metal sculptures, one on each corner. It's just a dramatic change. I mean, if any of you are familiar with Ron and Roman, they did the Francesca's. They're they're pretty well known in Metro Detroit, something maybe Two Raloo and some other ones. So they're 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 well respected and known. And it's definitely something that when we originally did it compared to now is is I would like to think it's an upgrade.
Okay. Now, I I noticed that that you referenced having having murals on the facades. We did get something, I think the board all got a copy of sort of more of a design, you know, kind of design feature than a mural. But when I see mural, I think of all kinds of things. And why don't you explain what what you're?
Well, that again, you know, it's it's not only is this this Ron and Roman, not only their architectural firm, but they do all the design work. I mean, they'll pick every color out, you know, what kind of material you're gonna use. And that was a vision that they have. But quite frankly, I I don't see that as as something that I desire. So, you know, I I gave the board something that's gonna be more of a geometric design where it kind of flows and maybe, you know, lead you to the entrance of the building that I would prefer. I I don't know. I guess maybe, you know, it's just my opinion, but looking at that one in downtown, it just scares me. In that direction.
So we're so we're talking a a designed feature similar to what you or what you had presented to us, just to sort of accent the building a little bit. But no longer, you know, you're no longer looking to put any kind of mirror on the.
No, I I think that would be too much of a statement and distract from from the original, you know, architectural plans that we were presenting today.
Okay. Nothing, no changes on the site plan, outdoor eating, any of that stuff? We're just talking about the the building facades or?
Yeah, we've already gone through and done that.
I know, yeah.
They've taken up way too much of your time. I apologize, but.
No, it's what it's what it's what we're here for, as long as you're successful. And you find and you find a table for Mr. Turner because he lives over in that neighborhood, too.
Well, I mean, we're definitely doubling the size, so I think that would be a good possibility.
Excellent, excellent. Julie, do you want to offer your your comments? And then I'll bring it to the board for questions.
Sure, I think that was, thank you, Chairman. I think that was the biggest question is what the mural on the side of the building was going to be the on the north elevation and Mr. Lang provided that information to us. I I think that would be acceptable. I think it'll accent the building nicely. The facade, I believe, although, you know, world of difference from the one that was approved, I think it does look nice. I'm looking forward to see what that looks like. But overall, the only other thing is the east elevation contains some mechanical equipment and we'll need to have that screened bill. So if you can provide the screening details for that on on your site plans, that would be great. Other than that, I I think it looks good.
Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions? Mr. Lowry?
My only question was the mechanical screenage that was already brought up.
Okay, very good. Okay, seeing no other hands, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I will move to approve site plan number 19-13, William Lang, for KJ's Irish Pub. That includes a revised building elevation, subject to the applicant providing screening for the mechanical equipment.
Or.
Or.
Then moved by Turner, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
And Commissioner Appone?
Yeah.
And the Chair vote yes. Good luck.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next item is site plan 21-14, David Constantine, VND Investments. Is the petitioner or representative here? Julie, why don't you, if you could just tee this, oh, it's Nick, could you just tee this up real quickly, just because this is a we've we've seen this before, just as a reminder, what what had occurred previously and what our expectations were for them to come back?
Yes, so this site plan went through a preliminary review process where the majority of, you know, conformity issues were resolved. And then we came to the planning commission and it was decided the planning commission that the elevations featuring just the split face block was not enough to add enough variety for the township standards for industrial buildings. And between, you know, that planning commission meeting and this current one, the architect for the project, Frank Salamoni, dropped off some plans showing the revised elevations. They now feature.
That's good. That's all I wanted. Now he can come tell him, he can come on and tell me what he what what he did, then we'll come back to you for your thoughts on what he's proposing.
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Cool. Who do who do we have representing the petitioner or is the petitioner here?
Sir, you're muted. Dave, you're muted.
Still muted. Still muted. Let's try this. I'm gonna put you into a waiting room and you can come right back in. Sometimes that fixes it.
How was that?
There we go. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for being patient.
No worries. Happens to the best of us.
Dave Constantine and Vince Sorello is here.
Okay, so I can get your address, please.
It's 47291 Burton, Shelby Township.
Okay. Okay, since we last met, how do how what have you what have you modified? How have you modified your what you're proposing for this body to?
We just we dressed it up. We added some different stone on the building. We added some awnings on it. I believe we had, we should have done enough to please you guys.
Okay. Mr. Fiore, do you want to comment? Are you pleased?
Yeah, I'll be honest with the elevations that they proposed to us. I was pretty impressed with the, you know, they took the revisions and ran with it. I think the the stone and the brick veneer are gonna look nice and I'm a big fan of the metal awnings over the doors. I think that'll be a nice little feature to add to the elevation, especially facing Jimmy's Drive there.
Great. Mr. Turner, I believe you had some concerns the last time. How you feeling about the building now?
I think he's done more than dress it up. He really, as Nick said, took the rendering and ran with it. He even included a brick wraparound on the building. So I think this is a much greater, you know, enhancement for this. And I want to thank you for taking our advice and taking into consideration and making a make a reality out of it.
Very nice. And it's a it's a very needed product in the community, too. So we're we're glad we're glad for your investment.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, anyone else wish to comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
I move to approve site plan number 21-14 for Dave Constantine for VND Investments. Lot two, parcel number 23-07-14-100-060 and lot three, parcel number 23-07-14-100-061 of Shelby Corporate Park, south side of 24 Mile Road, east of Shelby Parkway, industrial buildings, subject to the submission of seven sets of final site plans, addressing all planning commission and site plan review comments and getting approval from the zoning board of appeals to forego the screening requirements.
Second. Was that Mr. Groth?
Yes.
Okay, so moved by Moore, support by Groth. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yeah.
And Chair vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next item is site plan number 21-07, Beth Williams for Gigi Dental. Is the petitioner or representative here?
Yes, Beth Williams is here. I'm with Andy Wakelin and Dr. Gigi.
Okay, what do you would what are you asking? What are you proposing? What are you asking of this body?
We are located at 52975 Van Dyke Avenue, Suite 301 right now. We're at Van Dyke. We're looking to take a vacant parcel that was just recently purchased by MGA Land, Dr. Gigi and her father. We purchased this parcel to put a dental office on the site. She is currently located kitty corner across the street and wants to stay in Shelby Township and enjoy the area. We put together a site plan on this, trying to add some of the ideas that were on there before we had a preliminary meeting to begin with. So we took these suggestions from Julie Missich, made some updates and updated the exterior. It's pretty good difference from what we came to originally, adding on a second floor, which everybody wanted for this downtown district area. And I will turn it over to Andy Wakelin for some of the questions and comments that we had for the site plan that we are looking to do in the city.
Yeah, we did get a copy of the planner.
Mr. Commissioner Wakelin, could you introduce yourself and your address, please?
Yes, Andy Wakelin with Giffords Webster. My address is 1025 East Maple Road, 100 Birmingham. And I'm here in Shelby Township today. Basically, we got a copy of the planner's review comments from this last middle that we sent into the township. And we're kind of hoping to go kind of item by item here because there's several of them and make sure we're addressing exactly what the body and staff want to see for this project, if we can do that.
Okay, would you want to? I'd happy to bring the the planner on to present what what her her thoughts were and if you want to respond to those or if you want to respond to what you're you're already aware of. It does, you know, it's six of one, half dozen the other.
Right, if Julie wants to run us through, I'd be happy.
Okay, Ms. Missich.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. So as Ms. Williams said, when they originally submitted the preliminary plan, it was significantly different than the second plan that they submitted. The facade was different and so was the layout of of the site modestly, not major. So I had to do another re-review and try to marry those those two plans kind of together and see what was similar and what was not. So with that being said, if you look on the site plan review comments, the ones that are crossed out are items that were already taken care of on the site plan. There is still a significant amount of of comments that need to be addressed. With that being said, this office building is in an area of the township that that is Zone C6. This is the Shelby Township Center. And with that comes sort of extra, extra amenities, so to say, in this district that we're trying to do sort of a downtown district. The township is is making significant improvements to their grounds and we would like this area of the township to also mimic, you know, what what we're doing on the campus ground and in the relationship being at, you know, so close and near the condos there, we would like to incorporate some features that are gonna be consistent as other developments come online in that area. So with that being said, the building in the parking lot, their variance is gonna need for the is gonna be required for the setback. Some minor technical comments includes, you know, area concrete surface area specifications and cross sections for the either the asphalt or the concrete. Now, a tree permit will be required. Lighting fixtures will need to be coordinated with the fixtures that are required for the Shelby Town Center fixtures that is similar to the light fixtures that you see going down the the driveways to the township, the shopping center that is south of the driveway that goes to the police department. That center has incorporated those light fixtures, so we'd like to keep that consistency throughout. I believe the sign will encroach into the front yard setback or not encroach into the front yard, but not meet the clear vision triangle for that because you have to stay 25 feet outside of the the driveway, clear vision triangle driveway. Roof roof mounted equipment will need to be screened. From the plans, I could not tell if there was any roof mounted equipment or not. We'll need to have information on that. Now, the biggest one.
The equipment is gonna be located on the inside of the building.
Hang on, hang on. Let's we're not gonna debate it, but let's let her finish her comments and we'll bring you guys back in. All right, let's just have some order.
Now, the biggest thing for this one is the sidewalks. The sidewalks in this area are required to be a minimum of 12 feet wide according to our ordinance. So I know the applicant indicated that they'd like to seek a variance from that based on the, you know, the elevation of the property. In my opinion is, you know, if we're gonna if we're gonna try to mimic this area of the township to be consistent with the rest of the developments and the zoning ordinance, I think we need to stick with that because this is how it how it's all gonna start and and come together at some point. So I would like to see that done. The parking lots should be screened and I know that they said they're gonna install a three-foot-high landscape berm to minimize the parking lot on that. Let's see here. My major one and two screening is gonna be required for the rear or the east property line of the building. And the engineer had some comments as well that I believe Mr. Wakelin addressed as far as the storm is considered. And we also need verification from McComb County Department of Roads as well for the entrance on Van Dyke. So like I said, basically, those are my comments. I think they're pretty significant that we're gonna need to address. And like I said, I I'd like to see this this plan consistent with the Shelby Town Center objective in our zoning ordinance and master plan.
I guess I would also add, I I feel more comfortable seeing a little better copy of the the elevation just on materials and because it was really tough to tell. And if you look at that corner, clearly, the the CVS sort of sticks out a bit as a sore thumb and sore thumb and it's sort of countered, I think, what the the goal was for for that area. So we would just want to make sure, I would want to make sure that it it's gonna add to and be cohesive with with what's trying to be accomplished there. So the petitioner, do you wanna, Ms. Ms. Williams or Mr. Wakelin, do you want to comment on Julie's thoughts?
Yeah, if I could just go kind of comment by comment on that.
Sure.
The first one, number six, was the front yard setback for the building. You know, we're meeting that requirement. But we wanted to, see, the site is very rather unique, I think, even for Shelby Township, but unique for this downtown area in that the road sits 14 feet above the back of the property line. And it's 0.87 acres, so it's a rather small site with a lot of steep grade. It has a little over 113 trees on the site, so we're trying to maintain some of that character that's there now with the tree and the natural elements that are there. So what we're trying to do is bring everything towards the road to give it that more downtown feel that I think you're going for, which is why we want to bring that parking also closer to the road. So we propose that 85-foot setback, which is just past where the building is currently proposed. So the building sticks out a little bit more and the parking is still close, but subtle and setback. So if we're, if if you'd allow us, we would actually like to go with, rather than the three-foot-high berm, just because of the amount of horizontal distance that would take up, we'd actually like to go with a more of a block or a brick. I hate to say brick because I don't think that'll really tie in with the element of the building that Dr. Gigi is trying to go with, but a block wall, three and a half foot decorative, that way we can get that parking closer to the road and avoid filling more of the site and taking down more of the trees. We realize that would be a variance. And we're also looking for what the timing on that variance would be if we went that route, if the planner knows that.
Andy, what happens is we, as you know, we have the zoning board of appeals meetings once a month, so I guess I think our main objective at this point would be to get through the site plan and then then work on the variances. But we would definitely be able to go simultaneously with the planning commission, site plan review and the ZBA variances.
Yeah, or possibly the planning commission recommend this for approval based on based on ZBA giving us those variances, if possible. The other item was to indicate that surface material, whether that's gonna be asphalt or concrete, kind of depends on depends on the construction prices at the time, the cost of a barrel of oil. Occasionally, they get right in line with each other. So we're planning on asphalt, but that's to be determined and that the cross section would be determined by the geotechnical engineer at the time, whether that's a four-on-eight with asphalt and stone or a six-on-six concrete over stone would be a standard section. The other item here is the width of the sidewalk along Van Dyke. Currently, and it doesn't look very old, there's a seven-foot-wide asphalt pathway along Van Dyke in that area. And you can see that, I'm not sure if the township did that or the road commission, who who did it? But they they didn't feel like filling the site and taking out a lot of trees either because on the south side, the grade matches and on the north side, the grade is very close to what the road is. But in the middle, the sidewalk dips down five feet lower than the roadway, which is why we're also proposing that we want to keep our site as low as possible in order to maintain those trees and not fill the entire site as much as possible, which is why we don't, which is why we're kind of asking for that allowance to not put in that 12-foot-wide path pathway or sidewalk. Right, and as also noted, I don't believe any of the other properties in the area have that. I'm not sure if they came in.
Within 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 that district?
Yeah.
Do you understand? Because there I mean, there were there were different sets of standards that were sort of created, you know, for the development of of the development of that area. A lot of them in the stuff that that borders both Van Dyke and 24, it's a bit premature. The housing, the the multifamily has been developed quicker. Eventually, that commercial is gonna be built out on the corner. So I think what what the planners proposed to you, this is what the township has set as standards for developing in that area. You know, other areas in township, yeah, the things would be a little bit more appropriate, but it's to try to elevate what's built there. And this is what I think this is what the township has been trying to achieve with this.
Yeah, absolutely.
And frankly, in the fact that, you know, it hasn't gone as quickly as maybe everyone would want to. Maybe there's an argument there, but I don't know how compelling that is. Okay, we can be we can be patient to to make sure that what is built there is is. We can be, we can be patient to, to make sure that what is built there is, is done so within the standard that the community is, is determined.
Right. And I guess the point was that I'm not sure if the other, uh, businesses in the area, you know, like the CVS that you mentioned or the, um, shopping office complex to south of there, if they received the variances from this or did they come in before that master plan? But it, it kind of feels like we're, um, getting a little bit of a, more of a burden due to the character of our site where we drop down 14 feet from one end to the back. So if we were to put in pavement from the right-of-way all the way to the road, that would, uh, that would significantly add cost to the site and take out more trees. So, I mean, it would raise our site at least another foot and every foot counts when you're filling a half an acre. Um, which is why we're, we would be requesting that. Um, so in, I guess, moving on to the next comment, we can come back to them or if anybody had any comments on that.
After you're finished out, we'll, we'll, we'll bring it to the board for their comments and their questions. So, go ahead.
Okay, so then the, uh, ground cover, we would, um, be doing obviously asphalt or grass and landscape. And yes, we would propose for it to be irrigated. The, uh, we understand that the tree permit is required. I believe that's kind of pulled right before construction or during the construction engineering document review process. Um, I guess item number 12 would be provide the details of the light fixtures and poles. Um, you know, we did talk amongst ourselves and we understand that was just kind of a, a miss on our part. We should have had those decorative light poles along Van Dyke. Um, obviously that would take some lights more than likely off the front of the building to, uh, compensate. We, we don't need to light up the whole world here. We just need to have the lights that you guys want to see along Van Dyke. Um, number 14, the, uh, location of the ground sign. Um, you know, uh, the clear vision triangle, 25 foot, um, when I do it, I don't, I see the sign as actually being outside of that 25-foot clear vision triangle. But, um, I think that's neither here nor there at this point if we're going to put in the, um, three and a half foot decorative wall, if we could add a sign to that wall. Um, I think actually the CVS Plaza on the north side of 24 and Van Dyke has just that where they put their signage right on that decorative wall. Um, if that's an allowance, that's probably what we would like to do. Um, to that would be number 15 submitting that sign plan. Uh, we, we can do that once we, once we get the site plan pinned down. Um, I don't believe that's an actual requirement of the site plan submittal, uh, those are done separately. Um, number 16, uh, the, you know, I talked with the applicant earlier and she agrees, no, no outdoor storage. Nothing's planned, nothing will be there. We can add that note to the plans. The rooftop equipment, uh, there will be no rooftop equipment. It's actually all planned to be indoors inside the facility. We do have a generator and, um, I think an AC unit on the back of the, or a transformer on the back of the site. And we would have those, uh, landscaped to be screened around. Um, number 18 goes back to that sidewalk, sidewalk slash bicycle path idea. Um, and we do get what the township is saying. We want, you know, we want to be in the downtown area. We want to be part of it, which is why maybe having that eight-foot-wide, uh, multimodal pathway makes, makes perfect sense. We're on board with that. But we're not a, we're not a cafe. We're not, um, retail. So we're not going to have outdoor seating. We're not going to have people doing sidewalk sales. So we don't need all that additional pavement. I'm a, I'm a civil engineer, but I try to put in as little pavement as possible because I like, I like grass.
Um, uh, but when, when you, when you're, when you're trying to accomplish those sort of little downtown area, you don't, you know, determine the width of a sidewalk based on what that use of the building is going to be. So, you know, a six-foot for one, eight-foot for another, 12-foot for another. I mean, as a civil engineer, you would realize that that's, that's kind of silly, right?
I think, um, as an eight-foot wide would be more than enough for any use. Uh, the extra four foot isn't.
So we're.
But, yeah, we, we can disagree on that, but, um, still follow the standards if, you know, the body allows us to go with that eight-foot pathway. Um, the, I guess the additional item would be that parking lot should be screened, which we understand that's why we're going with that three and a half foot ornamental brick wall to accomplish that. I will say that the site would actually sit, as proposed, would sit a little bit lower than the road. So putting in the berm would be kind of difficult. Um, I guess it depends on what side of the site you're planning for this three-foot berm, whether that's from the roadside or from the parking lot. If it was from the road, it would actually be four and a half feet, so it would be much wider. Um, so that would be item number 19, we're requesting to go with that brick wall. Um, and speaking of brick walls, uh, tune number 24 would be the minor and major screening. As I said, the site's unique. Um, you know, we're 14 feet from the front of the site along the road to the east property line, the multifamily in the back. So we, you know, I believe we did provide that 25-foot buffer greenbelt that we, and we're actually trying to use the natural vegetation as part of that and incorporating more of a, kind of like a screen with vegetation. Uh, but we did not put the five-foot brick screen wall in there because if we put a, I guess the question is where do we put that five-foot brick screen wall? Do we put it at the property line, which our site sits well over five feet above that property line? So it wouldn't do anything. Or do we put it at the back of the parking lot, which would then be a brick wall in the middle of the applicant's site? So then she couldn't enjoy or even use really the back half of the property. So that's why we went with the hedgerow. Um, and feel that that would be a much better way of doing it without blocking off anybody walking in the area, which I think is what the township is desiring. Um, and then number 26, the municipal utilities. Yeah, we understand that we'll be pulling the leads into the site. There's already sanitary leads there and water is right in front of the site as well. Um, and like Ms. Missage said, um, we are, I believe we addressed all of the engineer's comments. Um, the additional comments would be the, uh, loading area, which obviously this is, this is a dental office. Um, we, the loading would be done via, you know, a pickup truck when it comes with small things from Costco. It's not, they're not getting large WB40 semi trucks here ever. So we, we aren't planning on a loading area. Um, and any loading that would have to take place could be done during off-hours. Um, they're not open past, what, six o'clock at night? So.
Seven o'clock at night?
Seven. Yeah, so they can easily manage that if they do need to have some loading done. Um, and like it says here, the indicate the areas of the ground cover and the irrigation. Like I said, it will be irrigated and the generator and transformer will be screened. And the applicant did, uh, you know, say the second story, we can do that. Um, but they are planning on it being a single-use tenant, possibly an apartment or more likely an apartment in the future, just one though. And then, um, we can provide that screening detail for the trash enclosure, which will be a rather standard detail. Those are my comments.
Okay. I'm going to bring it to the board for any comments or questions, uh, that, uh, you all may have for the petitioner or planner.
Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Wakeland, um, I heard you say that, quote, "We get what the township is saying about the sidewalk." I'm not really sure you do. I think you're hearing, but you're not listening. Lucky for you, or maybe unlucky, I don't know, I was on the planning commission when we actually developed the C six district back, yeah, a long time ago, back in the late nineties, mid to late nineties. And, uh, I for one am not okay with this variance on the sidewalk. I've heard what you've said, but as you say, we are going to agree to disagree. Um, many hours, and I mean many hours and many days, were put into this C six district by the planning commission, the planning department and the township board to come up with standards that will make this district different, creative and unique in the community. A down, a true downtown walkable district. And I know you don't like the sidewalk, but the standard is the standard. And my concern is if we start waiving standards because the developer doesn't want it or it's going to cost a little more money, if we waive it for this one on this side, we may as well just scrap the whole idea. If we start waiving standards, we're really undercutting the whole purpose of the C six district. So from my point of view, we, I, I guess we do, do agree to disagree. And I believe we should stick with the standards for the 12-foot sidewalk as outlined in the ordinance. And I'm sure, I'm pretty sure that you had some discussion with somebody at the township who advised you what the standards were for the C six district. So I need, I think, again, you may get what the township is saying, but I think you need to listen to what we're saying because we, we can make this work and your, your, your whole idea about we got to move, we don't have enough room for the sidewalk. Well, you can move that building to the east a little bit to accommodate the 12-foot walkable sidewalk. I really don't see an issue with that. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to comment? Julie, did you have any closing comments?
No, Mr. Moffett, I, I don't have any closing comments. I, like I said, I think Mr. Turner put it well. Um, you know, said it very well and, you know, we're trying to create an area here. And if we start deviating from, from this concept, then we might as well, you know, not do anything. And we're, like I said, we're doing a lot for the township on the township grounds. And I think we're trying to do some great stuff and, and make that, um, you know, for the rest of the properties as they, as they come in for site plan reviews or modifications.
Um, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm just a little, I, I, I'm, I'm sure that, 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 that this could be worked out, that we'll be able to work out. And I think, I think it's a good use. It would be, it would be a good use. Your client has a great reputation within the township, so it'd be nice to have them there. Um, but if they want to be there in nearly the geographical center and, and really kind of a, a, a focal point within the township, that, then there are standards that, that I think we need to hold it to. Um, and I think even just, it, it goes somewhat, I mean, at least apparent to me, just from your comment, there, there are a lot of things that we can do this and we can do this and we can do this. Well, I don't have that in front of me. And so, I mean, I, I, I'm just not in a position to, because I don't even know what I would be approving, let alone tonight. Um, I think there's some hard and fasts. You're getting, uh, things on, of these or of, of, of what's in the ordinance in the C six that I think you get, need to get a whole lot closer to accommodating, if not accommodating fully. Um, to then maybe say, okay, maybe there's, there's a little wriggle room, you know, within the margins on a few other things. Um, and as I had started off earlier, you, we learn, every year we learn more, like everyone does. And, yeah, there may have been some things that, that, that are built within that district now that maybe in hindsight, we, we, we probably wouldn't have approved. Um, so we want to know going forward that, that the elevations and what's built and how it's built and and how it's laid out on that property is going to be as good 10 years from now as it is 20 years from now and, and as good as it's going to be tomorrow. So, um, if there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
With your statement and my comments, I will move to postpone site plan number 21 dash seven for Beth Williams, Innovative Construction for Gigi's Dental for parcel number 23 dash zero seven dash one zero dash three five four dash zero one five, located north of 24 Mile Road, east of Van Dyke, based on the applicant exploring options to address the sidewalk as required in the Shelby Center zoning district.
Or, or.
Moved by Turner, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion?
Mr. Chair, if I can. Uh, Mr. Wakeland.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of, we're kind of off of that, so make it brief.
Um, I'm just wondering about, you know, the major buffer, the brick wall within there or like the building facade. Are we?
Tell you what, well, this, well, this, we're going to, well, we're going to act on this motion. Um, and if it approved, I would suggest you get with Ms. Missage and, and, uh, um, have those conversations with her.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, if there are no other questions from the board members on the motion, um, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
See, Mr. Meredith, three times and I didn't forget you.
I know.
Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yeah.
And the Turbo Chess. Okay. Well, we look forward to seeing you soon and, uh, Julie's always available, so. Uh, planning directors report.
Just one item. You guys touched on it, Chairman Moffett and Mr. Groth. Uh, we will be back in person, um, as of July 17th. So the second meeting in July, um, will be, uh, in the boardroom. I believe it's July 28th, but we'll send you further information. We'll be in the township boardroom for that meeting.
Excellent, excellent. If you guys think I'm charming on, on the Zoom call, we'll wait till you see me in person. All right. Uh, if there's, there any business from the floor? Seeing no hands are up, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Moved by Turner, support by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right.
Good night.
Everyone, enjoy your, enjoy your summers.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yeah, bye.